City Council to order on July 9, 2024. This meeting is also available on the Northern Berkshire Community Television and on This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer here. Bona.
Here.
Green. Fitch.
Here.
Morrow. Oleskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Okay, six members present, we have a quorum. Moment of silent remembrance, please stand. End the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Motion to approve the June 11, 2024, city council meeting minutes.
So moved. Second.
Okay, councillor Oleskowitz, councillor Blackmer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Approval of the June 25, 2024, city council meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Blackmer and Oleskowitz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Okay, hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you've reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties, please refrain from any personal attacks. Would anybody like to speak to the hearing of visitors? Yes, please step up to the mic and state your name and address for the record, please.
Can you hear me okay if I'm just like this? All right, I'm Heather Ranello and I'm from the Spencer House LLC at 732 Main Street in Beckett, Mass. And that is a new address, but I've recently changed addresses. I've been here before and I know that the cannabis is on your agenda for tonight and you don't know what you're about to do, but you know, basically I'm here representing Canaccordor North Adams, which is our business certificate name here in the city of North Adams. We really want to move forward, so we're here in support of you guys. We want to thank the city council and the administration for being patient through this really difficult time because we also feel that difficulty that you feel. And I see that you do have a lot of other pressing issues on your plate. But I just want to remind you that we have a license from the state through the Cannabis Control Commission, and it only requires a change of location. We have a special permit that was granted by the city of North Adams for the VFW. The VFW, yes, we did pivot from the Legion to the VFW. We have a lease with them and Lou would love to be here tonight, so he says hi and he's really excited about this. We also have the support and communication from the Cannabis Control Commission. They know everything that I'm doing, exactly what I'm doing here in North Adams. And we've submitted a waiver to the city, which kind of has been provided by the Cannabis Control Commission that really waives your responsibility, but it's been a couple of years and I'm, I have a few investors that are local people who are feeling a little misled and they're starting to get, losing their hope, I suppose you could say. So we would like and appreciate a timeline, please, and thank you. I know you guys are working really hard to do this, but I just wanted to make myself present and let you know that I'm still here, I'm still waiting, and good luck with everything.
Thank you. Anybody else for hearing of visitors? Council paper number 10,674-8, in ordinance amending the revised zoning map of North Adams by expanding and extending westerly to Rickards Street, the present B2 zoning district on State Road, so as to rezone all of Assessor's Map 95, Lot 40, as B2 passed to a second reading at the meeting of June 2025, yeah, June 25, 2024.
Move to continue to the meeting of July 23, 2024.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone July 23 and a second. Any discussion?
I'm just curious why the postponement?
Okay, because what happened, we did not have enough time between the last meeting and this meeting to publish it as required.
Got it.
It was only in eight days because we lost two days because of the holidays, and that's why. It will be published tomorrow.
Thank you.
Provided the eagle does its job. Councillor Blackmer, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to clarify that.
Okay, anybody else, discussion, councillor Bona?
I guess the question is, I get that it would be published tomorrow, but couldn't have this been published prior to this meeting?
It still wouldn't have had enough time because we were...
No, no, but, but it could have been published prior and we would have still been able to vote on it next week.
Yeah, it could have. I was actually working in the state system on census stuff.
Okay.
And I wasn't worried about it, to be honest with you councillor, because I knew that we didn't have enough time and we had to postpone.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone to the meeting of July 23. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Council paper number 11,646-D, in ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams, Chapter Z, Section 10 dot 12, entitled License Marijuana Establishments, referred to general government and public safety, with a return date of July 9, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Move to continue to the first meeting in August, August 13.
First meeting in August, okay. Any discussion? Councillor Brawlin?
Is it because we're still waiting?
Yeah, I mean, I, we haven't met and I don't know the status of general government. I think that was continued at a meeting I missed or something.
Councillor Shade.
Yes, to provide an update from general government, I did meet with the administration to talk about parameters. The general government has not had a meeting yet to discuss this, so we're going to do that and then hand over what we have to the Public Safety Committee to go from there. So we should be able to fit both those meetings in by that first meeting in August, I think, and have some groundwork there.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to postpone to the first meeting in August. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done.
Just a quick on that, could we, have we gotten legal opinion on this before we loop through, or are we going to wait till we're done it? I don't...
We haven't, we haven't fully done any changes yet, so the goal would be to get the language first and refer it back to administration and have, have that looked out through the mayor and that team before we, you know, actually vote on everything.
Okay. And also keep in mind, we're going to have to set a public hearing, a joint public hearing with the planning board.
Okay.
Just keep that in mind.
Okay, next paper, council paper number 11,826-3, in ordinance to amend the ordinances of the city north of North Adams regarding the fees and fines established in the city code, passed to a second reading and published as a municipal bulletin.
Move to postpone to the first meeting, or to the second meeting of this month, 7/23.
Here we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. To postpone to the second meeting in July. Any discussion? Councillor Shade.
Just for clarification for the public, this is also because of publishing timelines, so we're postponing the vote because we need to give the public enough notice to be aware, and the holidays don't count, so that took a few days away from us.
Those have been hanging and also on the web, but we're still short.
But we're still short the required 10 business days from the last meeting because holidays and weekends don't count.
And in addition to this ordinance, it was mentioned that we may need to set a start date for when these become effective. Has that been done?
We have not, I mean, my understanding is, once we approve it and then the notifications go out to the departments. I mean, I, I mean, in the past when we've approved fee changes and stuff, we've never had start dates. They basically become effective once we've approved them and they're, you know, get to the departments to charge that.
Councillor Shade.
Yeah, my understanding is that they would go into effect immediately after it passes, so...
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion and a second to postpone to the second meeting in July. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Council paper number 11,826-4, in ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams by adding Appendix D, entitled Fee and Fine Schedule, passed to a second reading and published as a municipal, as a municipal bulletin.
Move to postpone to the meeting of July 23.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Council paper number 12,191-1, in ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams, Chapter 15, entitled, entitled litter, Sections 2, 3, 8.1, 8.2, 16, and 25, postponed to the meeting of July 9, 2024. Councillor Blackmer, would you like to...
I'd make a motion to continue until 7:23 and refer to public safety, back to public safety with the recommendations of the attorney to go over.
Second.
Okay, so we're going to refer it to public safety. Any discussion on that? Councillor Shade.
Yeah, is, is the next meeting going to be enough time for them to meet?
Well, I'm hoping to get with, and see if I can schedule a meeting next week.
Okay.
It depends on everybody's schedule. If not, we'll continue it again.
Thank you.
What was your return date? Because I couldn't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry, the meeting of 7:23.
Okay, second meeting in July, yep. Okay, no further discussion. Motion to refer to public safety and return to the council for the second meeting in July. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Everything's sticky.
Okay, council paper number 12,191-2, in ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams by adding a new chapter, 15A, entitled Feeding the Wildlife, postponed to the meeting of July 9, 2024. Councillor Blackmer.
Move to refer back to public safety and continue until the meeting of 7:23, 2024.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion passes. Council paper number 12,401, Communication from President Sapienza Regarding the Setting, Regarding Setting Date for Special Meeting on Borrowing Order Dead Exclusion for the New Greylock School Building. And my communication, I'm going to ask the mayor if she has anything she would like to add to that.
Great, thank you, President Sapienza. And thank you to the council for agreeing to meet on Monday, July 22, at 5:30. We had asked for a special meeting specifically because I knew your agenda would be full on the 23rd, I had this premonition. But we specifically want to have enough time for the council and the beginning of our outreach to the public to be read in about the Greylock School project. A week ago, tomorrow, two weeks ago, we received approval from the state to continue on with our project to build a new school at Greylock Elementary, the, the property there. At that time, we enter what we call financial feasibility, which is where we come to the council, we present to the council, and we also do a significant amount of outreach to the public, which will eventually involve a debt exclusion vote that hopefully will happen in September. We're still working on some of those dates. But I wanted to address the council and also invite the public to join us on not only July 22, but we're also going to have some community forums on Thursday, August 15, at Greylock School. It will also include a tour of the school as well as a full presentation of the new project. And then on Thursday, August 22, at Brayton, we will do a tour of Brayton as well as a full presentation, and that will be an opportunity to have a Q and A and find out more information about the school project, as well as for the public to provide input. So those are very important dates, I'll say them again. July 22, at 5:30, city council meeting, which is a Monday. Thursday, August 15, at Greylock, at 6 o'clock. And then Thursday, August 22, at Brayton, at 6 o'clock. Thank you for allowing me to speak and thank you for your willingness to have a special meeting.
Thank you, mayor. And I'm going to read my communication into the record. Dear fellow city councillors, I am requesting that we set a special meeting in the North Adams City Council for Monday, July 22, 2024, at 5:30 PM. It will be right here in the city council chambers. Purpose of this meeting will be for the mayor to present to council with the updated plans of the new Greylock School and the borrowing order for that project. Council will then present their motion and vote. And originally I said vote for the order, it, I'm going to amend it to say vote on the order. To continue, an agenda with the actual order of our business will be posted in accordance with the open meeting laws to the city boards, the bulletin boards, the one inside and the one out in the front of the building. Councilors will receive this by email. We have to post in accordance with the open meeting law, of course, and it will also be made available on the city's website. Any discussion, councillor Shade?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor. You said we wouldn't vote on the debt exclusion until September, is that correct?
It would be a citywide vote.
Okay.
And we're still navigating what that date would be.
Okay.
So the council will vote on the actual borrowing order and to authorize me to have a special election for this. And then, once we get that, then we'll vote of the voters and have a special vote for the overall project.
Councillor Blackmer.
I don't remember when the, is there a primary?
Yes, in September.
In September. I thought it was, when is it? It's early this year, right?
That's what I have anyway. Yeah, September 3 is what I have.
I can't hear you.
What is the date of the preliminary? September 3 is the election date.
Thank you. It's going to be, that's going to be too soon, right?
No, that'd be, well, we'll see how we...
We might be, we might be able to tie it in.
We have 120 days from our date of notice from the MSBA to get a vote.
Would you like to elaborate on the details of the vote on September 3 or not at this time?
We as a team haven't discussed that timeline yet, but we'll, hopefully by the time we come back on the 22nd, be able to elaborate upon that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this? Council paper number 12,402, Communication Number 47 from Mayor Maxi Regarding the Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Closeout Account-to-Account Transfers. I'm going to file the communication without objection. Mayor, would you like to present this to us?
Sure, at the end of each year, this is a, an annual process that we do, so we are very fortunate that we have ended the fiscal year in the black. But within the budget itself, we've had some overruns, some that we predicted and some that surprised us a little bit. But we've had enough money within our operating budget to clear those accounts. So I'm going to go over the accounts that we're covering. So the first is the Law Department. We are covering $68,827 and change, that's mostly for litigation for employment matters, Blackington Mill, the ordinance borrowing, and just outside ordinance reviews above and beyond what we budgeted for last year. Information technology, we had a lot, a lot, a lot of hardware issues, mostly with wiring and connectivity between our Public Works Office and City Hall. Cameras at the old police department, we've had issues with some of our internet, which we've had to upgrade. We've also upgraded our alarm system. We've increased the switch and the firewall at the skating rink, which died this year, which we weren't expecting. We've purchased a new recorder for our radio recorders. We had to rebuild the whole system at the campground due to a power outage. We did some new wiring and basically fixing things that break just as they do. So Mark has overspent in his budget by $173,000 and change. Most of that is really driven by upgrading our network and our, our services through that. The police department, we're looking to cover $114,000 and change. Most of that was in fiscal year '24, we were down three officers, and we also were late in getting our headquarters open, so we had to keep on our headquarter clerks longer than we had anticipated, and that worked to our advantage because we did get a grant that paid for all that transfer of equipment for 911. In the transfer station, usage is up, so our bills are up in the amount of $56,000 and change. Public services under seasonal salaries, we had to pay some extra people this year, and that's where we took it out of. They were called in part-time to cover for some outages of people who had some medical conditions within City Hall that required them to be out for an extended period of time. And we also paid for William in the Community Development Office while he was transferring to, apart from part-time to full-time. Engineering, most of that cost of the $20,000 is driven by the Walnut Street design, issues that we've had on State Road, environmental assessment fees, again related to State Road. Snow and ice, my favorite account, $61,000, even though we didn't have a lot of snow, we had a lot of ice. That is really going back to salt, sand, and equipment parts. The vocational assessment is for Smith folk. When we budgeted, we had budgeted for one student, and in reality, we had two by the time school started, so there's an additional $21,000 there. Unemployment compensation, those are for employees who have left mid-year for various reasons of $20,000. And then capital items, that was the one that snuck up on us a little bit, but we have a justification for that. So that is a combination of electrical, phones, and wireless. We seen this, we've seen a significant increase in our electricity, I'm sorry, a significant increase in our business phone costs as well as our wireless costs. But with our electricity, we didn't sell the credits. We'll, we'll sell the credits in this upcoming fiscal year, we're kind of on an 18-month cycle, so we kind of got hit a little bit there of $126,000. So the total transfer to cover within the budget, it's not meaning that we're short, we have enough funds within the operating budget of a total of $702,289.98.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Turn the communication.
No, I want the order.
She read the order.
Do you want me to read every line of the order?
No, we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. I thought she filed it.
All right, I'm sorry, no, okay, it was Mike.
Oh, he filed.
Okay, that's all.
All right, so we have a motion to adopt.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Councillor Bona?
Yeah, through the chair to the mayor. With Public Works and the transfer station, as you said, usage is up, so cost is up, but wouldn't income also be up?
Some of the income we are seeing in, or the increase of usage at the transfer station, however, some of those costs that were incurred at part of the 56 are for our own hauling.
Okay.
Our receipts looked good for fiscal year '24.
Councillor Blackmer.
I mean, 61, it's not too bad for snow and ice and...
Considering.
Considering, I mean, we've seen, we've had some really bad years, and that's actually the only account that we can overspend, so it is what it is, and I think a lot of these things were pretty much what they are. There's not much we can do about it.
Thank you.
I'm just glad we had the other side to, to offset it.
And just so you know, throughout the year, we trend these things, so when we get, you know, to January and we see snow and ice is blowing up, we say, okay, we know we're going to have to cover it, where are we going to see it? When we look at electricity, you know, eight months in and we see the trend, where are we going to cover it? So we're just, I'm just a little disappointed with electricity. We did add one additional building this year, so that makes a difference.
Okay, so we have, anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion to adopt an account transfer of funds totaling $702,289.98 for the end of the year, fiscal year 2024. We have a, we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Council paper number 12,261-1, Communication Number 48 from Mayor Maxi Regarding the Grant Budget Closeout. And I'm going to file the communication without objection. Mayor Maxi, would you like to present the grant budget closeout, please?
Yeah, so we are very fortunate, we were able to rebuild the north, the northeast hangar. The total project was $753,000 and change, and the city share is $56,000, which I think is pretty good. So we received a grant from the FAA in the amount of $566,000 and change, and a state share from Mass Aeronautics of 130. So as I said to you probably every year since I've been mayor, I really want to close out these grants properly instead of rolling the city share balance, I want us to start funding it. So this grant is ready to be closed out, and the local share is $56,171.35, and we're taking that money out of the sale of city-owned land. That account is to be used for projects that would have been there after borrowed, so rather than borrow, we can use this money. And that's what we'd like to do tonight to close out the grant. In addition to that borrowing, our plan is, the Airport Commission is issuing an RFP for the hangar management and the use of the future. We're expecting to have revenue to exceed about $20,000 per year, which would mean that this would be paid back in less than three years.
Okay, thank you.
We have a cash flow potential there.
Thank you. Let's move on to the paper. Council paper number 12,261, in order to transfer the sum of $56,171.35 from the sale of city land to grant Northeast Hangar Project to close out grant for city share, motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, councillor Blackmer, councillor Fitch, any discussion? Councillor Shade.
Yes, through the chair to the mayor. How much would be remaining in that sale of city land account after this transaction?
Standby.
Thank you.
I have that number. I have to do some quick math. I don't know whoever did this capital improvement plan and made it so big, but that's a joke to everyone. Nobody's laughing. I guess I should have stayed on vacation. I'm getting there. I do have the number. I do have the number. It's like the spaghetti sauce that's in here. There we go. All right, let's do some quick math here. So seven fifty-two minus one forty-four because that we used zero six. What did I say? So roughly, we're going to have, um, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars left in that account.
Thank you. And follow-up on that, uh, are there any other projects coming up that you foresee using money from that account for?
Not right now.
Okay.
Not right now because I, I consider that account an investment back into our buildings.
Agreed.
Um, we're very fortunate, we're starting the roof project. Um, the company started on Monday and we were very fortunate, the school pledged two hundred thousand dollars and we, we budgeted for that. Um, but right now, we used it, um, within the budget cycle for rent of the headquarters for the, temporary headquarters for the police department and I thought this was an appropriate use rather than take it out of stabilization. Um, we are also working to replenish this account on the potential sale of Sullivan School, the potential sale of panel land that we've been navigating for many, 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 many years. Um, but we'll see where all of that goes over the next few months.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Blackmer.
Um, two questions. Um, one, you mentioned that we'd get twenty thousand dollars a year in revenue, we could pay it back. Would we be paying that money back into the sale of land account? Is that what you're saying or are we?
Um.
Because we're not borrowing because we're taking it out of.
Yeah, we're going to take it out of the sale of land. We're going to see how we do if it goes back into the airport revolving.
Okay.
And if we have a surplus in that account, we'll pay ourselves back.
Okay. Secondly, I thought we were paying for the, um, the public safety new site, I'm sorry, police department because it's just, it's police department over there with ARPA money. I didn't realize that was.
We did the build out through that and we paid the rent for the first year through ARPA. And now that ARPA is done, we, in the budget, you approved a transfer of the sale of land or sale of city land for a hundred and forty-four thousand, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
It's on the recapulation sheet and we talked about it in finance.
Yeah, I forgot about it.
That's okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Paleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Sepienza?
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Council paper number twelve thousand, four oh-three, communication from Counselor Fitch requesting time for Lisa Dent from Mass Moca to speak on the museums, community engagement, and upcoming events. I will file the communication without objection. Counselor Fitch, would you like to speak on your communication, please?
I'd love to, thank you. I was so fortunate to be able to meet Lisa Dent in her, I think, earliest days here in the city of North Adams and has been here for, I think, over a year now, maybe even quite a bit longer. But anyway, Lisa was hired as the, uh, the director of public programs at Mass Moca and so is here to talk about said public programs and what the museum is doing to engage the community. Thank you.
Yes.
Is it okay to?
Either mic.
Yep, that way, fine. Hi. If you take it right off, it's easier. It's okay, probably, I need to hold the paper for a moment. Thank you all. Um, thank you and good evening, Council Mayor Mackey, and thank you, Andrew, for inviting us. Uh, as you said, my name is Lisa Dent. I'm here today representing the recently established Department of Public Programs and Engagement at Mass Moca. And while many of you know members of the Mass Moca staff through our community work across the city, I wanted to introduce myself and share more information about our goals. Our department is committed to engaging our community in cultural activities, enriching the day-to-day lives of North Adams through our programs and initiatives. We are dedicated to promoting inclusivity, creativity, and community involvement for all across North Adams. And with strategic partnerships and collaborative efforts, we aim to enhance accessibility and participation in cultural and educational activities. Mass Moca's school partnership program is the cornerstone of our efforts to integrate creativity, collaboration, and community involvement. Through strategic collaborations with local schools, we provide students with enriching experience that inspire learning, agency, and personal growth. Our program can carefully integrate school curricula, offering tailored, uh, educational experiences that complement classroom learning. And we collaborate closely with NAPS educators and the district arts integration specialists to align our programs with school objectives and educational standards. Our goal is to support teachers in delivering engaging and impactful learning experiences that inspire students and foster a lifelong love of learning. And in addition to our tours of the galleries and visits to performances in the Hunter Auditorium, we provide hands-on activities in kid space after each guided tour now that encourages students to explore new interests and develop valuable skills. We believe our program strengthens community ties by involving students, educators, families, and local organizations in collaborative efforts that benefit the entire community. And we are committed to working closely with schools, educators, and community stakeholders to ensure that every student has the opportunity to thrive and succeed. And through these partnerships, we aim to inspire the next generation of leaders and engage citizens who will contribute positively to the future of North Adams. I'd like to thank Mountain One as our key community sponsor with a multi-year grant of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is enhancing all of these programs and making sure that they continue. A recent new addition to our programming is the Activator Program, which is designed specifically for our local high school students. This program not only prepares students for future careers, but also instills a sense of civic responsibility and leadership. It's designed as a structured channel to empower our teen audiences to have a substantive voice in our institution. We provide teens with access to cultural work and strategy, developing valuable skills in leadership, collaboration across a wide range of constituents, analysis, and communication. We are currently hosting our third cohort of eleventh and twelfth graders who engage in intensive programming at the museum for eight to ten weeks, giving students extended exposure to all aspects of the museum's work. These teen leaders have required meetings two to three times a week to develop their literacy in the visual and performing arts, nurture their own creative practices through workshops and artist engagement, and gain valuable professional skills, including working on long-term and processual timeline that culminates in a large-scale project. Each cohort experiences different workshops that align with our current exhibitions and programs. Summer cohorts work on a longer timeline and assist with Camp Mass Moca, while our spring cohorts, on a slightly shorter timeline, focus on the development and production of the Teen Invitational, our annual week-long celebration featuring an exhibition with over two hundred and fifty works of visual art as well as perform, music performances by students and teachers from ten high schools in the Northern Berkshires. Our most recent flagship initiative, the R and D Store, standing for research and development, serves as a dynamic community hub where residents can access resources related to our exhibitions and performances, engage in workshops, and participate in hands-on learning experiences. The store stocks a wide range of materials from art supplies to audio equipment to artist-designed decor, fostering creativity and skill development among all age groups. Recently, our department has organized a variety of workshops this summer conducted by visual and performing artists. And these workshops, creative, um, expression opportunities, I would say, are a platform for artists to connect with the community. And by fostering these interactions, we aim to cultivate a thriving arts scene in North Adams. I will hand out flyers, uh, for workshops that will start this Thursday, including author Jonathan Latham discussing his newest book, Cellophane Bricks: A Life in Visual Culture, within which Latham grew up, uh, talks about growing up in his father's studio. He went to art school and in his own words, made hundreds, if not thousands, of drawings, collages, paintings, hand-drawn comics, and even two animated shorts before diverting at nineteen to prose. On July twenty-fifth, we will host artist Joseph Kekler, uh, artist who uses his voice in performance to touch on a variety of strategies and effects such as choral speech, ventriloquism, lip syncing, impersonation, alter ego, and vocal soundscape, working both individually and in groups. Participants will be invited to experiment with several techniques and ideas designed to expand the way they address their voice in their own artistic and performing arts practices as well as their day-to-day life. And on Saturday, August tenth, Amy Yose, whose exhibition is currently on view, will take visitors through a drawing activation in the gallery to create works on paper using tools of her own design. So I encourage you to join us for any of all of these programs, after which guests can come to the chalet, our beer garden featuring live free performances in our courtyard on the Mass Moca campus. I wanted to mention that we have a few spots available for Camp Mass Moca where young people entering grades two through six can explore our expansive campus and world-class art exhibitions to create original works of their own. Week two, which runs from August twelfth through August sixteenth, is called Audience, 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 uh, where we will look at surrealism, absurdity, and hilariousness as the drivers of our camp week. Uh, we will activate Williams College art professor Amy Podmore's installation, Audience, with sound, durational performance, nonsensical playfulness, and participatory happenings, all surrounding the idea that a work of art is truly nothing without an audience. The week aims to completely stretch intergenerational minds around question of art is and can be art, and art can be anything and everything. In week four, August twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, we call the sky and earth are not the limit, where campers will use the form of dance and movement to create an outdoor piece of choreography inspired by James Terrell's Cavou and Taryn Symonds' The Pipes. And this outdoor exploration and interaction of the relationship between light, dark, motion, and stillness serves as the anchor for this week and the question of how is the natural world our dance partner? And last but not least, I've been thrilled to see local residents in our recent artist project, The Plastic Bag Store. Created by Robin Frohart, the immersive experience asks us to consider how single-use plastics impact our environment. I have brought a few activity guides that we will be using as part of our conversation with community members and inviting them to consider the ways that they can rethink plastic use in their own home. The phrase "community in everything" encapsulates our commitment to integrating community-centric values into every facet of our operations and initiatives. It is a guiding principle of our recently shared strategic plan, which outlines our long-term vision for promoting inclusivity, accessibility, and engagement. We seek to collaborate with local businesses, educational institutions, and community organizations to amplify our impact and reach, and we are dedicated to ensuring that all residents, regardless of background or ability, have equitable access to our programs and resources. We value community feedback and will continuously adapt our programs based on the evolving needs and interest of North Adams residents. So in conclusion, the public programs department is committed to building a vibrant, inclusive, and engaged community in North Adams. Through initiatives such as the R and D Store, the Activator Program, workshops with local artists, we are going to foster learning and community pride. And we look forward to working closely with the North Adams City Council and community stakeholders to achieve these goals and create a brighter future for our residents. Thank you for your time and consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions, you may.
Thank you. Any, uh, anybody have any questions? Okay. Good. Thank you. All right, we have no licenses this week and now we are going to move into open forum. This will be an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, we ask that you remain within the two minutes and refrain from any personal attacks. Would anybody like to speak with, to open forum, please? Please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ed Adrabadi. My address for the time being is twenty Porter Street. I'll be moving out within a couple of weeks. Everybody knows me by Mel. City Council President, Sepienza, through you, to the city council members, and to the mayor as well. I'm here tonight to issue a public apology to the previous city council members, to all of you, and to the mayor herself. For someone in my position, I don't have to prove that I have nothing to earn from this. In fact, I have everything to lose. I'm apologizing that I've appeared to be giving support to a certain individual whom I've appeared multiple times in front of the city council for that person's shady business formation and practices. It took me some time and honestly, it took me two thousand dollars in unpaid bills from that individual to realize how wrong I was. Being late is better than never. I know that none of you witnessed any of what I'm going to say. Nevertheless, I apologize that I did not put an immediate stop when the racist, homophobic, transphobic, and for God's sake, even anti-Semitic rants start coming from that individual's mouth. I know better and I was raised to be better than that. And the only time I failed, I failed miserably. I was cautious enough to wait until I get a no trespass order against that person and live at an apartment that is covered by that no trespass order to come out and issue a public apology to you, to the previous city council members, and to the mayor herself. And to the good people of North Adams that showed support to that individual because they saw me showing support to that person. I'm not doing this for myself. I have everything to lose. I'm only hoping that the next person, the next business, and the next town or city will learn from my grave mistake before they deal in good faith with a pathological liar, bigoted psychopath. Please accept my apology and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for open forum, please? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Ben Lamb, Marion Ave, North Adams. Tonight I stand before you as the husband of a wife and the father of a three-year-old who were chased on June twenty-seventh by a pair of repeat offender off-leash dogs residing at five oh-two West Main Street. For years now, these dogs have been allowed to defecate on neighboring properties and to terrorize, chase, attack, and in some cases, cause bodily harm to at least a dozen known individuals. Since twenty-twenty, the police have been called no fewer than six times about these specific animals. Yet to date, all that has been done was a single set of fines in twenty-twenty-three. I have tried to work with enforcement to address this ongoing issue, but the city is failing to prioritize the safety of those who are being chased and attacked and instead continues to put the burden of proof on the people being victimized. These animals and their owners have been permitted by law enforcement to continue to attack people. The owners lied to the police when they are called on them and the calls barely make the dispatch log. When the police and ACO have been called, there has always been an excuse given to the victims as to why they can't do anything. First it was, we need photographic evidence that they are off-leash, but the last thing someone being chased by a dog is thinking is, oh, let me stop and take a picture of these vicious animals chasing me. Then it turned into, we need proof of injury and then we need a medical report of the injury. Meanwhile, these animals remain off-leash almost daily, harassing and chasing everyone from babies to seniors with owners who unapologetically permit their dogs to be a danger to others. You're supposed to call the police when something like this happens, but we called on June twenty-seventh and nothing was done or filed with the department and then another attack happened the next day to a different individual. It seems that no matter what, the police department and ACOs of the city are refusing to act on these dogs and owners that are directly violating at least three city ordinance and one state law, and I can't figure out why, but it's unacceptable. I should not have wore a body cam or carry a firearm in my neighborhood because the city refuses to protect me and my children from persistently dangerous animals. refuses to protect me and my children from persistently dangerous animals that are known for their violations. What will it take? A child losing an eye? A senior breaking a bone? I kindly request that this council and the mayor critically address this major gap in enforcement policy so that the injury of innocent individuals is not on your hands and mine's. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for open forum? Mayor, would you like to update us on anything?
Sure. I've got a couple of quick things. I promise I'll make it quick. First of all, I'd like to introduce Stacy Abucy. You've known Stacy through public safety and our grants and procurement officer. I'm pleased to announce that Stacy has been promoted to city auditor. Welcome, Stacy. Sitting at the end is Maria Kozik. Maria, on Monday, has joined the team as administrative officer. Maria has a long history of financial background, including running a family business, and most notably was the special assistant for Peter Larkin way back when. That's when we started together. So please join me in welcoming Maria as the administrative officer. Kathy Ead will remain on staff as special assistant to the mayor, really working a part-time schedule, I hope, until she opts to retire or kill me, whichever comes first. So congratulations, Stacy. Welcome, Maria. The Department of Public Services has partnered with Tyne Bond to facilitate an engineering study on a project that you approved for the inventory of pipe material for all of our water services. I believe it was a grant execution you did called the Lead in Copper Survey. So we mailed a bunch of postcards out, and we're urging residents to update photos of their service line and complete the survey. Everyone should have received a postcard. Don't think, I'm glad you got two, fill it out twice. Don't think it's a scam. It is legit, and we are looking for that data. So we look forward to everyone cooperating with that project. Beginning on Thursday, July 11th, milling and paving preparation will begin on Chase Ave., Brook Terrace, Hall Street, and Grove Street. Milling and paving preparation will begin on Prospect Street on Friday, July 12th. No parking will be allowed on these streets from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. during construction. Travel on these streets may also be limited, so we ask that residents plan accordingly. We just sent out a reverse robo-call, a reverse 911 or a robo-call this evening, and it is posted on our website. But again, that project is coming up quickly, so we thank you for your cooperation in those areas. In the world of grants, thanks to Stacy, Mitchell, and Mitchell Maranti and Chief LaFave, we are the recipient of a 911 regional grant in the amount of $796,000. A little excitement, thank you. This funding will support our goal of enhancing emergency response communications. It will also let us purchase 39 portable radios for the fire department, 40 portable radios for police. We place equipment that has been in use since 2005, and I think I procured that contract in 2005. So this is a big, was a big reach for us, and this is the second phase. The first phase, the first grant that we received, Phase One, was to build out our 911 system, and so this is upgrading our radios and some telecommunication equipment. In addition to that, we had an exciting week last week. I'm pleased to announce that we've been awarded $75,000 from the Massachusetts Preservation Fund. This will be used to repair the two-story belvedere at the North Adams Public Library. This money, in conjunction with the bequest of Gail Carity, will be used to repair the belvedere. Estimated cost of the project is about $350,000. The initial architect design was completed by funding that was earmarked by Representative Barrett, so we thank the representative for the $75,000 earmark, and we are finally going to be out to bid to repair the belvedere. Also, we talked about the roof already today, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Committee reports in minutes. Moving on, liaison updates, counselor concerns. Counselor Fitch?
Yeah, sure. To the, through the chair, to the mayor, actually, if I could, a couple of things. First of all, you mentioned that you'll be out of, you'll be done with your updates quickly. I love your updates. I always love your updates, so keep them coming. It's great to hear about these things. Congratulations. Welcome. A couple of things. Some people have approached me recently about a couple of different things. One, the Sullivan School, just kind of asking, like, is that moving forward?
Yep.
Has it been sold? And also about Heritage State Park, just kind of the disrepair of the buildings over there.
So Sullivan School, first, we issued an RFP. We received two proposals. Those proposals are under review at this time. We'll be making an announcement very shortly. Heritage Park, we've applied for a grant, two grants. One would take care of Building Three, which the museum is in. Mostly for that is the roof paint, kind of sealing up that building. And then we applied for a secondary grant for the other buildings to do all the envelopes, the roofs, the windows, the doors, to seal them up and to also address the paint. So we haven't heard on either of those, so that's our next approach. Fingers crossed, you're right. But we hope to be successful.
Thank you. A couple more questions, if I may?
Sure.
Thank you. Around staffing, so we had some staffing moves. Is there going to be a new grant administrator?
Right. Grant and procurement specialist, right now, the procurement piece is going to go under the administrative officer, and Stacy, Kathy, Mike, and I, and maybe with some supportive care, we are still going to monitor the grant piece.
Mayor, could we have you speak a little bit louder, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Got to yell at you, Andrew. So we haven't really navigated that. We want to get everybody settled in their new roles and see where we're feeling the pinch, so to say. But Stacy has done an excellent, excellent, excellent job in that role. The number of grants that she's applied to and worked with the public sector on have been incredible. So that's also an important key in the administration. But we're going to give Maria some time to get up to speed, get into our new swing of things, and then we'll evaluate that position as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then finally, around staffing as well. It came to my attention that the farmers market manager is going to be departing our current one. Do you know if the new role has been posted?
Yeah, I believe she's staying till the end of the season, and we'll address that at that time.
Okay, gotcha. And then the final one. You mentioned previously about openings in boards and commissions in the city.
Yes.
Do you know, have we made progress in bringing new people in?
I have, just today, I got an email. I have one person who's interested in the Housing Authority Board, but other than that, it's been a little quiet.
Okay. Hear that, everyone? Apply for boards and commissions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? I have a couple of quick things here. Just a reminder, Route Two in Williamstown is closed to through traffic. The Green River Bridge is currently completely closed down. You'll have to use Ashton Avenue to Mass Avenue, North Uzic Road, back out to Cole Avenue to Route Two for at least one more day. And another thing is, I can't stress enough, but bicycle safety is really a concern of mine. Myself, a bicyclist, typically I ride on the trail, but sometimes I do ride on the roads. Tonight I had an incident with a young man. I was sitting here at the light, coming up Main Street, getting ready to turn onto State Street, and it's a good thing I didn't start right away because this young man just flew right across in front of me as I got the green arrow. And when I honked my horn, I got an unpolite gesture, let's put it that way, so. But I can't stress enough, bicycle safety, do not ride on the sidewalks, and follow traffic rules for your safety. And this is a personal thing of mine, wear a helmet. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Correspondence?
Actually, Counselor Sapienza, could I, could I say one more thing?
Go ahead.
It's sort of a counselor concern, and, folks, this isn't necessarily our community. It's here too, but this is about, many of us have become aware of the Stanford School Scoop, which is, you know, a post that's gone out there. It was a message from a departing principal about kind of highlighting prejudice in their, in their school system, and specifically anti-LGBTQI+ prejudice, which is something that is concerning considering this is a community that is very near us. This is, this is happening everywhere, this kind of prejudice, bigotry, if you will, social shunning. And it's just something that we really need to be careful of here too. I mean, North Adams has been overwhelmingly welcoming, in my experience, but this is out there, and this is on everybody's brains. And so I just wanted to mention something because I spent a long time working in diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, teaching workshops and everything. I wanted to introduce the concept of the paradox of tolerance, in which states, "The paradox of tolerance is that if a society's practice of tolerance is inclusive of the intolerant, intolerance will ultimately dominate, eliminating the tolerant and the practices of tolerance with them." So the only people we do not need to be tolerant of are the intolerant themselves. And so let's all remember that and share these stories and support each other and do the best we can. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Correspondence, hearing none. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, Counselor Fitch, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.